Joining us this evening for our city council meeting, we'll go ahead and get started. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Chetum?
Here.
Lorick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Flack?
Here. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Father Constantine Zozos representing the assumption Greek Orthodox Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray for this council meeting tonight and offer up prayers for our mayor, our city council, the staff, and I give thanks for the service they have chosen to take up on behalf of our Pocatello community. Give these members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate with us on the items before them. And oh heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance and support. Help us all to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer and nurture the bonds of our citizens, and let us remind ourselves that our responsibility is to serve the common good of all. Bless all those who work to make this place a beautiful city to live in. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. This we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. The only thing I wish was different with Father Constantine is that he would have that Greek festival at least twice a year, not only once a year.
We're actually thinking of moving over to the Labor Department. No.
I would support it as long as we can get it more than once. It's incredible, so.
Shorten the lines.
That's right. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes. Let me get back to it. I gotta love this. Oral reading of the minutes. Budget develop, budget, let's see, minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings. Budget development meeting of June 25 and 27, 2024. Clarification and regular council meeting of June 6, 2024, and work session meeting of July 11, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of September 1 through 15, 2024. C, animal shelter advisory board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Beverly Dixon to continue serving as a member of the animal shelter advisory board. Beverly Dixon's term will begin September 22, 2024, and will expire September 22, 2026. D, historic preservation commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Amy Comandador to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing James Young, who resigned. Amy's term will begin September 20, 2024, and will expire November 20, 2026. E, council decision zoning and future land use map amendments for 2806 South Fifth Avenue. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the request from Gate City Builders to rezone approximately 5.46 acres of land located at 2806 South Fifth Avenue from Commercial General CG to Residential Commercial Professional, RCP, and to amend the future land use map from Commercial C to mixed use MU. F, council decision zoning and future land use map amendments for 906 East Elm. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the request from Perm Properties LLC to rezone approximately .23 acres of land from residential medium density single-family RMS to residential commercial professional RCP, and to amend the future land use map from residential R to mixed use MU. G, council decision short plat approval for Dykman Commercial Park, 6284 South Fifth Avenue. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a short plat for Dykman Commercial Park, which subdivides approximately 5.76 acres of land located at 6284 South Fifth Avenue into four lots, subject to conditions. H, safety footwear policy update. Council may wish to adopt an updated safety foot policy, amending some job titles and adding two positions to those eligible for the footwear allowance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through H as listed in agenda item number three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Chetum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Chetum? Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have no proclamation, so agenda item five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. October 3, 5:30 PM will be a council clarification meeting. 6 PM, a regular city council meeting. October 10, 9 AM will be a city council work session. October 17, 5:30 PM will be a city clarification meeting, and 6 PM will be a regular council meeting. Other events on September 20. Pocatello Police Department promotions, awards, and swearing in ceremony will be at 11:30 AM. I believe that's right here in the council chambers. September 21, Idaho State University's Homecoming Parade at 10 AM and the game at 4 PM. September 22, Zoo Idaho Untamed Art at 11 AM and Zoo, at the Zoo Education Building. Call the Zoo Idaho Office for more information. September 30, League of Women Voters Forum for the 2024 Elections at 7 PM in the council chambers. October 4, nominations for the Human Relations Advisory Committee's Human and Civil Rights Award are due October 4. Visit the city's website for more information. Zoo Idaho will be open on weekends only through October 27, and as a reminder, the open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. Okay, we'll move to agenda item six is a public hearing. Six, a public hearing proposed fiscal year 2024 September budget amendments. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, council and mayor. Gene Hill Finance Department. Again, this is just to go over the budget amendments, and as we've said before, it just allows us to have the most flexible budget and be more accurate about it. And at this time, it's, this amendment's for 736,000 total. Do you have any questions or?
Any questions for Gene, council? Pretty straightforward, okay? Thank you, Gene. Oh, Gene, before you leave, have we received any correspondence that the council has not seen in your office?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
For the correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony of those supporting the application. Any testimony of those uncommitted to the application. Any testimony of those opposed to the application. Okay, then I'm not going to have Gene come back up. He's a man of many words. So we'll go ahead and I declare the public hearing closed.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to.
Oh, we have, we have an ordinance at the end of the meeting for that, this, and so. Thank you. Okay, agenda item seven, Idaho Outdoor Recreation Fund Advisory Council, 2024 grant application. Council may wish to approve submission of a grant application to the Idaho Outdoor Recreation Fund Advisory Council in the amount of $390,000, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Funds would be used to complete trailhead improvements at Upper City Creek Trailhead. There is no city match required.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve agenda item number seven, the Idaho Outdoor Recreation Fund Advisory Council 2024 grant application, and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
And before we vote, could we hear from Christine?
Josh got you. Josh got you. That guy, I don't know why he did that. He knew what was going on. Yes, we can definitely hear from Christine.
I'd like to just hear a little bit more about what the plans are for, if we get this grant.
Sure. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Christine Howe, grants manager. We've actually been working on the design for this project for several months now in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department through the director Anne Butler and Carrie Rhodes, who's our outdoor program manager, along with our engineering staff led by Merrill Coyle. And so we're in a good position to apply for this grant, which we found out about on very short notice. And it would relocate the current parking that's at the Upper City Creek Trailhead onto entirely city-owned property, and we'd regrade it so it's at an ADA compliant level and increase the parking from approximately 10 cars to now 50 cars, which would also allow folks with trailers to be able to park if they're bringing a vehicle on a trailer with, to the trailhead. It would install fencing for sort of safety, as well as create a new trailhead entrance and kiosk, and we would install vault toilets, which are also ADA compliant, so folks would have access to restrooms up there. And we'd be able to improve the gate situation that's on that City Creek Road so that in the winter we can close it, but folks will still have access for hiking and cross-country skiing and such. So it would also include utility connections so that we can put some lighting and potential other security measures in the future phases, and have a water connection and electricity connection up there. So a lot of improvements at the Upper City Creek Trailhead, but primarily some safety improvements for that parking situation and just creating additional access with many more vehicles being able to be accommodated and kind of moving folks off of the private property onto the city-owned property. So it's an exciting prospect, so we're hopeful that we can get this submitted and are successful. There's potential other grant funding opportunities if we aren't successful, so hoping we can go this route, but if not, I might be back before you in January. But it's been a good cooperative project between engineering and Parks and Rec, so happy to help support that.
Super. Councilman, Councilman Chetum. Thank you.
Have these plans for this property been finalized, or are these just kind of tentative at this point?
They're at, I would say, nearly final design. They're about 60% design, which is enough to go out to bid that package.
The lighting you mentioned for this parking lot, is there a determination yet of exactly what that will be?
No, I believe that would be likely in a future phase just because of the amount of funding, but we are preparing for the electrical connection in this phase, and then it would put up lighting that would be sufficient for kind of safety concerns and things like that. We did a public post as part of this application to solicit feedback, and a lot of folks were in favor of additional security measures at trailheads with lighting and potential security cameras in the future. Based on the previous round of awards for this funding that the state did, we think this amount is a competitive amount for an application at this phase, but we want to be prepared for future additions for things like specifically where the lighting would go, a pavilion, for example, so.
If I could follow up. Is there much demand for these funds at the state level? I mean, have any feel yet for what your chances are of getting this grant?
I'm not sure. They were oversubscribed in their last round, but they did reduce some awards, and they only, it seemed they only solicited kind of other state agencies and larger recreation agencies. So this, they got a new round of funding from the legislature this year that it's their final kind of ARPA funds, and so they're trying to get it obligated before the end of the year. So we're hoping that with the kind of quick turnaround, maybe we're in a good position since it is very shovel-ready. But it's another, there's 5 million available in this round, so we're hoping to at least get partially funded, if not fully funded. So we'll kind of see how the applications come in.
If I could follow up again. Is the tentative planning that's been done of such a state that if we don't get fully funded, we could complete as much as we can, or is there a limit as to how far, how much we might be able to do with limited funding?
Yeah, we could do some kind of value engineering, but I think the primary thing would be the parking lot grading and the fence. So looking at that breakdown, the minimum we would need to cover those expenses is what we could move forward with, because otherwise you can't install, you know, the vault toilet and things like that if we don't have the actual parking lot laid out. So that would be our minimum, which I think is roughly around 200,000.
Okay. Glad to see a vault toilet up there.
That'd be good. Super. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
So we have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, collective bargaining agreement to fire union. Council may wish to approve adoption of the fiscal year 2025 through 2028 collective bargaining agreement for the International Association of Firefighters, Pocatello Firefighters Local 187, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the fire union, the IAFF Firefighters, Pocatello Local 187, Pocatello Firefighter, sorry, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Chetum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move forward, could we ask the president of the union to come up to the podium for a moment?
Yeah, we can, we can. We can, we can run him over the coals here. Absolutely. Ask him any of the hard questions.
Now he's on camera, right?
On camera, hit him hard.
I'm just curious. This has been an interesting negotiation season with the fire union. Are you confident that you have the support of the local members of the union with this agreement?
Yes, I'm confident that we have. We had a vote last night on it, and it ratified, so we have the support.
Were there concerns that weren't addressed in this?
We were able to address most of the concerns with our membership. In fact, probably we all have the concerns.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Yes.
Jordan, I want to personally just thank you for all the work that you do as the president of the fire union, but also just as a firefighter in general. And so if you extend those thank yous to the rest of the fighter fighters.
I will. Thank you.
The hard work that you guys do for our community is amazing. You put your lives on the line for our community, and just, just the hard work you guys do. And so I appreciate the time that was taken between yourself and those who are with you at the table and with HR and our legal department for working so hard to get this thing done. And it seems like it's something beneficial on both sides, and so I just want to extend my appreciation and thank you to everybody who was involved in this bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, Jordan, who are you?
Jordan Bennett, every local president, local 187 president.
Thank you. We just needed to get that on, on the TV, yes.
Yes, that's a good thing to know your name. I also want to reiterate what Cory said. I just want to thank you guys for all of your work. To go through the negotiations and all the time that that took above and beyond the work that you do in your jobs every day, so I think you and all your leadership and your members for everything that you guys do and our HR department, I think we got a really good agreement and through a lot of hard work. So thank you very much.
So I would agree, but I'm going to throw the legal department in the middle of the HR department too.
Oh, yes.
I think both sides did a great job, so you're welcome.
That is true.
He was over here finding a way to get you off the council.
No.
I needed to make sure we covered for you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Thank you, thanks, Jordan. Thank you, council.
And a special thanks to Jared.
No, that's too much, Linda.
I think, Tim, I think that's enough.
That's right. Anyway, thank you. It is, it was a lot of work, and it's a, it's a great contract, so we appreciate both sides. With that, Aubrianna, could you please, oh, I'm sorry, we had a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Chetum. Could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Chetum?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, bid acceptance award Zoo Idaho Potable Water Project. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the Zoo Idaho Potable Water Project to Dry Creek Underground Utilities in the amount of $74,257, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Funding for this project has been budgeted in the ARPA funds. It says Parks and Recreation Department. That is incorrect. It is in the ARPA funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to award the bid for the Zoo Idaho Potable Water Project to Dry Creek Underground Utilities, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Chetum.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we ask our Parks and Recreation Department Director to come up and talk for a moment about this project?
We would love to hear from her.
We would. My concern, and the thing that I think makes this unusual, is we're awarding a bid to someone who didn't bid the lowest amount, and I think that deserves an explanation.
Sure. Anne Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. We had talked extensively with our engineering department, along with the contractors that bid on the project. After we started looking at some of the rock formations, we made some adjustments to the plan of attack, in essence, on where we were going to drill, and met with legal as well, and just determined that we felt like the risk versus reward Dry Creek was a much more solid bid in their alignment of planning for rock, where JAG Enterprises left a little more flexibility on charging us in a little bit higher amount. So all parties, engineering, myself and Peter and legal, all felt that this was the better choice.
Okay, and Jared, our attorney, had a clarification.
Can I, yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. The totals that were presented in the executive summary and the portion of the bid are not truly the total, so I would actually like to clarify that we're not actually awarding the bid to the higher bid. It was our analysis and our determination based on how the bids came in and how the bids were presented that we are actually awarding it to the lower bid. And so I just wanted that to be clear for the record. Even though their total had a lower number than the other total, when you really looked at the bid that was submitted, the amounts are such that we are, we are recommending the council choose the lower of the two when you put in, when you factor in that additional information. So I just wanted that to be clear on the record.
And I think that's my point in doing this, is that we make it very clear, the logic behind what we're doing here. If I could, I could pursue this a little more. What's, what's the zoo been doing for potable water up to now?
I believe they've been bringing in water for their administration building, which is mostly staff. Other than that, they haven't had it in locations where we had it prior.
And how many locations will this serve?
It should serve the administration building, and then we're hoping that it will also serve the Upper Ross Park restroom.
But the water that has been available prior to this is not drinkable by humans, but it's okay to feed to the animals?
Correct, and we have some other culinary sources in the zoo. It was just the upper location that was really hard to get access to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Chetum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Chetum? Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, resolution approval of city rebranding selection. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve the city of Pocatello rebranding logo, the space between, and associated tagline, "The One and Only," as discussed at the September 12, 2024 work session, and approve implementation of the logo and associated brand style guides, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number 10 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Paulson?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think there's more decisions to be made here before we vote. Unless we're going to vote for the logo that line was, was presented, we've got other choices here that we might choose from to accept with this bid.
I think that if I understood and pleased, Anne, you might want to come, or Marlies, Marlies was there. Anne was, Marlies was being quiet. I think that what you have in front of you, council, are the, the fonts that are able to be used in the variations of the logo.
I disagree with that for branding. You do one font one way, and that's branding.
Well, let's, let's have Marlies explain that, but that's how I think it was presented.
All right, so Marlies served the public information officer. I know you see a couple different versions here, like this one, the first on the first page. What they're just showing you is how you can use the O in different ways, but the logo would be on five, four. So it would be this one, but they're just showing you how you can use that space to help market or put it on the activity guide or a magazine.
Josh?
Yeah. My understanding, Rick, you're talking about this page here?
Right.
With the font, the font decision. I, I think my understanding is that this decision, and I would prefer not to make a decision on this until we begin looking at the implementation of it, for example, on embroidery, on business cards, and, and whether or not that spacing is used differently, which I believe the spacing could be used differently based on the usage. For example, if on embroidery, the letters need to be spaced slightly further. I don't see that as an issue. But regardless, I don't think that's a decision that we should make right now until we see the application of it in the different mediums that it would be taken, if we, if you believe that we have to pick one and only one.
So this would be the one, the logo, but on this page, what you're seeing is if it needs to be spaced a little bit more for a T-shirt or a little bit more for a hat, they will label it and say this is going to be the logo that can go on a hat or, or on different material. So that's the only reason why they put that in there, was just so you could see how the kerning can be different for different products that it gets put on.
Yeah.
Based on my experience with branding in the past, you don't carry a brand forward and allow people to have a choice of how it's going to be presented. It is one way, and that is the only way. And somebody in this organization is going to be a brand Nazi and enforce that. Where it's placed, how it's placed, the fonts it's used, the colors that are available is the only way you make a brand stick, and I don't think we leave that, this subjective to users.
I, I agree with you, however, I don't think that this is leaving it subjective. This is just saying if there is spacing needed to keep from bleed happening as it's being embroidered or being printed or being screenshot, that, that's why they've given these different templates here.
The fonts are different, very different. You go down to that bottom font, it's very different than the top one.
Correct, but you made a point also during the work session that we don't want it to be a black bar, right? So they give you these other options to where now, if it does come up as a black bar from option one, we drop down to option two to make it more legible. So I think it's just given the option to make it clear for everyone to be able to see it and to read it.
The letters are different. Take a look at the E and the spacing on the E. They're very different.
I agree, but there again, though, we're trying to keep them spaced so that it's legible for people to be able to see it. And I think that that's what, because if you embroider on a shirt, it's going to look different than what it looks on screen print.
And now you've destroyed your brand by doing that very thing. You've left what a brand looks like to the user, and that's, that's not the way you carry a brand forward with impact.
And we are the user, though, right?
You're, today you're the user, tomorrow it's the police, the day after it's engineering, it's the fire department, it's whoever may be using that. And unless there is one way to do our logo, we haven't enforced the brand.
So. So is the, so Mr. Mayor, or Marlies, is the vote based upon these options or is it based upon the specific, this logo?
This is the logo. This is the one that we're presenting.
So that's the one that we're voting on? Okay.
If I may, the other thing to realize is that the style guide is the next step after you approve this, and that will be developed and give the full guidance on what will and won't be, just as Councilman Cheatham said, what is permitted and what's not permitted. So please keep that in mind, as the process is still developing after you make this decision. So that's why they're moving forward with the rest of the development of the design.
I would just build on that with a style guide, and there can be slight differences depending on the use, but that will be dictated by the style guide. So it won't be just everybody making.
Right.
Their own decision about how they're going to use it. It's going to be controlled in the way that you were talking about, but you do have to make adjustments for different contexts and different uses. That's very much a part of logo design and branding, so I, I think that that will become clear, as you said, at a later stage.
So from what I understand is we're voting on that design, which is what I thought, and then the style guide comes next.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, council? Is that how you understand that?
I'll vote against that brand.
I mean, the truth is, this is what we want on everything. I wouldn't, I mean, we, this is what we want on everything. And the way printers are these days, this can go on anything, and we don't need this spacing or this extra kerning, so. But.
Okay.
I knew that Councilmember Cheatham had asked for that, so here were some examples. Those were just examples because he had asked for some kerning, but this is what we would want on everything. Coffee cups, shirts, across town, it would be this.
But there's more than kerning between one and five or six. There's a lot more than kerning. There's, there's the way the letters are developed, the spacing on the E, the size of the O and the dot in the center. They're different characters. They aren't the same thing. And that, that's my point. We need one that we can use on everything, and this isn't it.
Well, I know at the last meeting, one of the things was asked was if the center of the O could be bigger, and so these were just examples. So again, like this is the one, the main logo, this is what we would want on everything. And like I said, with printers these days, I don't think we need to do some of this kerning.
Okay.
Does anyone?
Okay, any other questions, council? Okay, so we'll be looking forward to a style guide if this passes then. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Paulson. Aubrianna, can you please call the roll?
Nicholson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we'll wait and see what that style guide looks like. That's yours. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move to Agenda Item Eleven is an ordinance approving an amendment to fiscal year 2024 appropriations, ordinance increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by seven hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars to account for additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously unappropriated cash balance of the unanticipated expense incurred by the city. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilmember Mansfield?
I would move that the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Eleven, be read only by title and placed on final, placed on final passage publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
We need the whole ordinance published.
And the whole ordinance submitted for publication. My apologies. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number three-one-two-eight, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October one, twenty twenty-three through September thirty, twenty twenty-four, and amending ordinance number three-one-three-three, the amended appropriation ordinance dated January eighteen, twenty twenty-four, number three-one-three-seven, the amended appropriation ordinance dated May sixteen, twenty twenty-four, number three-one-four-six, the amended appropriation ordinance dated July twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, providing for an increase in expenditures in the following funds: general fund, liability insurance fund, street fund, recreation fund, airport fund, library fund, transit urban fund, sanitation fund, water fund, water pollution control, WPC fund, information technology fund, fleet fund, and utility billing fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by seven hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of ordinance number three-one-two-eight, number three-one-three-three, number three-one-three-seven, and number three-one-four-six shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Rick?
Cheatham?
Ordinance?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Paulson?